I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, April 25th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzicca.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fabs.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have students here from Ramona to lead us. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. We have quite a crew here tonight, and we're very excited to share something special with you. So I'm going to let them all file in. Great job. This is Ms. Elman's second grade class. And this year, we've really been focusing on social emotional learning. And they have done something very special as a class that I asked them to come share with you. So at the start of the year, we talked about what a class family was. And all of the students came up with their ideas on how we could turn our class into a family and stuck it on a post-it note. And we turned all of those post-it notes into our class promise that we say every morning. So here it is. First, I'm going to have them all introduce themselves. So that was Mrs. Elman, the second grade teacher.
Hi, my name is Olive Schwanger.
Hi, my name is Aiden Osman.
Hi, my name is Harper Kastner.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Boyce.
Hi, my name is Teddy Martin.
Hi, my name is Maddie Mantin.
Hi, my name is Lucas Davis.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Takadus.
Hi, my name is Mathias Swedillo.
Hi, my name is Niva Sheth.
Hi, my name is Isabella Zuber.
Hi, my name is Joseph Young.
Hi, my name's Tammy Anzer.
Hi, my name's Angela Chow.
Hi, my name's Amara Balabane.
(Singing) We promise to use manners, be honest, show kindness, and smile. We will always cheer each other on, include everyone, and help each other because we are a family. If someone makes mistakes, we help them. It's okay, and we help them. If someone has to stop, we stop. We treat everyone how we want to be treated. This is who we are and what we do, even when nobody's watching us.
Yeah, thank you. I think it deserves a round of applause, too. They start every day that way as a family. And that's the part of their morning meeting. So then they do the Pledge of Allegiance.
And now could everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Singing) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I think you brought more than one of us to tears with that message. We need to get the words because we should all start our day with that important message. Thank you so much.
Excellent job. I like the motions, too.
Yes.
And the stomping on the ground just to prove our point. This is what we do.
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you, parents.
Our artwork this month is also provided by Ramona students. First graders studied Frida Kahlo, Vincent Van Gogh, and Kehinde Wiley to inspire their own self-portraits with a personalized background. Second graders studied David Hockney's swimming pool paintings to create their whole-body drawings of themselves swimming. Doesn't feel like it today, but we'll do that soon. Third graders created special self-portraits in conjunction with their study of immigration and their own personal history, heritage, and culture. Fourth graders studied the line portraits of Henri Matisse and produced large self-portrait sketches using thick fold patterns. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kremis Goli for some staff recognition.
Thank you. We have a very important member of our staff today to recognize. Liz, would you stand up and approach the podium? And while you do that, I will share a little bit about Liz. Liz is here tonight to be recognized and celebrated for completing her doctorate degree. The Doctorate of Education and Literacy Program at Judson University prepared Liz to make substantial contributions to the profession as a writer, a speaker, a teacher, a leader, and a researcher. And we know she already does within our district. As a cohort member of D L I T six, she was able to seek a deeper understanding of the powerful role literacy plays in the lives of all learners. Throughout the four-year journey, Liz delivered multiple presentations, wrote and published articles, and enhanced her scholarly abilities through the dissertation research and writing experience. And we all know a lot of work went into that. For her dissertation, Liz conducted a survey study with colleges and universities in the state of Illinois to answer her research question, "How do secondary teacher preparation programs define and include instructional support for disciplinary literacy?" She shared her research and successfully defended her dissertation, "Disciplinary Literacy and Teacher Preparation: The Impact of Definition and Instruction Disparities", on January 13th, 2022. In her defense, Liz shared the discovery of a disparity between the definitions used in disciplinary literacy and content area literacy and whether a difference between the two is acknowledged by instructors across university colleges. This disparity has a large impact on pre-service teachers' education because content area literacy is the generic strategies applied to comprehending nonfiction texts, while disciplinary literacy is the specific way a historian, scientist, mathematician, et cetera, reads, thinks, speaks, and writes. Without a concrete definition and intentional disciplinary literacy practices in teacher preparation programs, pre-service teachers will not be fully prepared for their discipline-specific classroom instruction. Even though her doctoral program is over, Liz hopes to continue leading in the field of literacy as a writer and researcher, and we very much hope as a curriculum coordinator in our district as well. Presently, she has submitted a commentary article to the Journal of Adolescent and Adult Literature regarding the findings of her study and the impact they have on the field of literacy and teacher preparation. Liz, we're so very proud of you, and we're so glad to honor and celebrate you this evening.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. What an incredible accomplishment. Lucky to have you.
It was a long four years. So glad to have your learning and your contributions here in our district. So thank you for bringing them up to us. Thanks for being here tonight. We hope to continue to celebrate. So many of our staff members continue their education as they're employed here and bring their learning back to advance our own curriculum and instructional strategies. And Liz is a fine example of that. And we hope to continue to celebrate our employees moving forward as they complete their doctorates. Thank you, Liz.
At this point, I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on District 39 Fiscal Year 2022 amended budget. I move to, or sorry, I move to adjourn to the public hearing on District 39 Fiscal Year 2022 amended budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carried by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the next public hearing. I hereby call to order the public hearing on District 39 Fiscal Year 2022 amended budget for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, April 25th, 2022. I'll turn it over to you.
I'm going to turn it over to Corey Boltmeyer to walk us through this.
All right, so this will be short and quick. So the amended budget, we've talked about it a couple of times. The reason we're amending the fiscal year 2022 budget is that we, the district, issued, received just over 6.5 million in proceeds from debt certificates issuance. When we did the original budget, we had not included that. We hadn't even talked about it. But then, as we all recall, when we talked to Liz and seen where the market was going, the decision was made to issue them sooner than later and take advantage of lower interest rates. So that is the reason for the amendment. There are six line items on the page that I'm sharing with everyone. Four of those relate to the bond issuance. The other two are just adjustments to the purchase service and capital outlay. Line items in the capital project funds. Both of these funds are non-operating, meaning that our six operating funds were kept exactly the same, which can allow for some nice budgets, actual comparisons across multiple years. So that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. Other than that, we just have it up for approval later this evening.
I just had a quick one. We made this a choice, and it certainly seems like it was the right choice to do it early because interest rates went up. What was the interest rate that we got it at again? Or just, I know there is multiple, but I mean approximately.
It was, I think it was below, below 2%, but I think we, done it even now, we would be well over 2%.
Good, good choice. Thank you.
Let's see other board comments. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding this presentation for the budgets. Do not see any audience members at the moment. Board members, any further discussion? Okay.
Having no further business, I request a motion to adjourn to resume the regular meeting of the Board of Education. I moved, excuse me, I moved to adjourn to resume, to resume the regular meeting of the Board of Education. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Motion carried by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Yes.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzicca.
Here.
Lisa Schneider Fabs.
Here.
Erin.
Here.
Thank you. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2022, regular and executive session meetings. I move, I move to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2022, regular and executive session minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved, made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying yea.
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 The motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Are there any board, are there any audience members that would like to speak? Okay, we'll move forward with board reports, starting with our committees. Mr. Panzicca, Facility Development?
Thank you. We had a short facilities agenda this month. We got an update on the Harper asbestos abatement program. Some of the work was scheduled and completed successfully over spring break. And the rest is scheduled to be completed this summer when the buildings are empty, when the building is empty. And then we also talked a little bit about the High Crest Middle School flooring replacement, and that'll be presented later tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Caesaretti, School Finance?
Yeah, thank you, President Palin. So we had a much more involved finance committee meeting, as I all remember. Mr. Boltmeyer reviewed the amended budget, which was presented earlier. He also presented student transfer, excuse me, student transportation fee options that we discussed extensively. The district's regular transportation contract with North Shore Transit expires at the end of this school year. School codes allow for a one-year contract extension, which was approved at the March 4 meeting. Mr. Boltmeyer asked members for both guidance regarding, sorry, for guidance regarding whether the fees should be increased and if so, by how much. He provided a 10-year history of transportation fees for reference. Mr. Boltmeyer reviewed recent ridership statistics and presented proposed fee options for consideration. Option one, fees were $647 for round trip and $375 for one-way. 56% of these fees would cover North Shore Transit's fee increase and 59.5% of the total cost. Option two, proposed round-trip fees at $695 and, round-trip, and $415 for one-way. Ridership covers 100% of N S T V increases and 64.3% of total costs. Option three captures 75% of the total cost with round-trip fees at $820 and one-way fees of $475. Other pricing information noted was rider fees would need to be $870 for round-trip and $500 for one-way to cover 80% of the total cost. To cover 100% of the total cost, rider fees would need to be $1,090 for round-trip and $625 for one-way. He noted the historical percentage of N S T costs covered by fees to parents is generally around 75% or more after adjusting bus rider fees. Members of the board agreed that the proposed options were not ideal. It was suggested that NS, the, I don't know, North Shore Transit would possibly propose a contract amendment due to the rising gas cost. The historical philosophy of transportation fees has been that parents cover a portion of the fees. As a shared service, members agreed that the goal of keeping fees comfortable to maintain ridership and to continue to increase transportation fees annually to cover rising costs. Members agreed to option two, that option two would cover North Shore Transit's increases in fees and to have a longer-term goal to cover 75% of the overall cost. That was the meeting.
Great. Thank you. Strategy, Mrs. Schneider Fabs?
Well, we didn't have a strategy.
Correct. We'll move, we'll move right along. Liaison reports. Committee, Community Review Committee, Mrs. Hart.
Thank you. The CRC meeting took place here on Tuesday, April 12. The committee discussed and edited a graph of their social emotional learning report, which will be finalized over the next couple of weeks. And then the CRC committee will present to the board for approval at the May 20 meeting. So we very much look forward to that. A discussion also took place around membership for the committee in the upcoming year. And officers will be elected for the 2022, 2023 school year as a final meeting. Thank you. It's forward to that. Thank you.
Mrs. Kim, the Ed Foundation and I A S B. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes. Thank goodness, because I didn't go to that meeting.
I went.
Definitely, Mr. Caesaretti.
It was an exciting meeting.
Oh, it was easy to get to.
Yes. So, so this, this meeting was on Wednesday, the 20th, and it was quite long and involved. And impressive, actually. I was really well-run and well-attended. So I think the first shout-out is the Cheers and Beers Party, which is a major fundraiser, is happening on the 29th, which is a Friday. I think you still have a day or so to get tickets. Should be a lot of fun. Two, I know this will be the source of some controversy to some of the board members, but the Ed Foundation is dropping Lab 39, which they felt really bad about, but they had quite a, I think, excellent kind of presentation and kind of thinking through why they're doing it. So it made a lot of sense to me. It's not core to their mission and arguably redundant. So I'm characterizing what was said. And three, let's see. Oh, because their core mission, I left this out. Their main rationale was that their core mission is to raise money for group grants and to fund other projects. Okay. The next thing, and this was fantastic presentation by two of our teachers, Sarah Samborn and Lindsay Shea. They recapped their innovative spaces, which was a pretty large group brand that they got a few years ago. And it was excellent presentation. I think it might end up being video somewhere.
There is a video somewhere.
Yeah.
I think they're going to put it, make it available on the information website.
I urge you all to watch it. It was fantastic. So, and that was about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For going and for the updates. Great. Mrs. Kim, I A S B.
I do have a very short update. As I mentioned last month, I A S B became a founding member of the Consortium of State School Boards Association, CASPA, which met on April 10th. So they had their sort of their foundation meeting then. Also, I A S B has a new broadcast series, Inside I A S B, which will feature Illinois school district leaders discussing board leadership and education topics. We have like seven right now. And that's it?
Great. Thanks for sharing that. And I'll turn it back to you for the legislative update.
Okay. There have been a number of bills that have passed both houses in the last couple of weeks. There's sort of a flurry of activity. And I'll just identify some of the more interesting ones that will most likely get signed into law. So I'm just going to run through these kind of quickly because I have a bunch. HB 4296 requires all grades six through 12 school districts to adopt and commence implementation of career exploration and career development activities in accordance with a post-secondary and career expectations framework by 2025, and articulate that framework on their website. The activities will prepare students to make informed plans and decisions about their future education and career goals by providing students with opportunities to explore a wide variety of high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand career fields. I thought it was a little funny that they were like, if you are looking for a lower-wage job, this is not the program for you. Okay, so HB 4256 allows a school district to waive for the 2021, 22, and 2022, 23 school years only the evaluation requirement of any teacher whose performance was rated as either excellent or proficient. HB 5193 provides that the safety education that school boards, they provide instruction on, can now include safe gun storage in the home, as one of the topics. SB 3893 provides that a substitute teacher may teach up to 120 school days rather than 90 for any one licensed teacher under contract in the same school year. SB 3936 establishes a school safety tip line in Illinois where Illinois State Police will receive tips from the public regarding potential self-harm or potential harm or criminal acts directed at school students, school employees, or schools. Under the bill, the Illinois IT Department would also operate a dedicated website to provide mental health information for students. HB 5214 requires school districts to provide interpreters for parents in I E P and 504 plan meetings. I thought was kind of interesting because I was like, isn't that already required? But maybe I just wanted to clarify that. HB 5488 provides that a middle or high school student shall be permitted by a school board at least one school-day-long excused absence per school year to engage in a civic event. HB 4365 codifies I S B E emergency rules that allow for reimbursement for residential placements for students with significant special education needs, even if the provider is not I S B E approved. And finally, HB 5127 allows school districts 40 days to reorganize after an election instead of the current 28 days. That's all I have.
Very. Thank you.
Great.
Summaries.
Hopeful to know. Thank you.
Dr. Kremis Goli, information items.
We have several items to update the board on this evening. First, under written communications, the board received written communications from Jeff Toth and Danielle Lennington regarding lifting mask mandates and COVID cases following the Mackenzie Variety Show, from Brandy Russell requesting shield testing continued to be available, from Keter, Keterzina, I apologize, Lipinski regarding middle schoolers learning about sexuality and also her concerns about board member Lisa Schneider Fabs, from John Jacoby, co-chair of the Willmet Sesquicentennial Celebration Unity March and Ceremony to be held on Memorial Day, May 30th. And I know the board is considering who might be able to attend on behalf of the board. And in terms of administrative announcements, we have a few celebrations and then some updates as well. First of all, we'd like to celebrate our music student accomplishments. The W J H S Symphonic Band has been selected to participate in the 2022 University of Illinois Superstate Concert Band Festival, which will be held on Friday, May 6th, at the Cranart Center for Performing Arts in Champaign, Illinois. Only five other junior high school bands across the state of Illinois were selected for this honor. We're incredibly proud of our band in this achievement, especially given the extraordinary challenges of the pandemic. Please help us congratulate our symphonic band students on this amazing accomplishment. We know they're excited to perform. We also have the Reflections Celebration scheduled. It's scheduled for May 19th. This is our annual district celebration of career milestones in retirees. And we're excited that this year, plans currently pending changes. Currently, we are planning to return this year to in-person for our Reflections event. The last two years, we've needed to hold that online. And so we're eager to have the opportunity to gather safely on May 19th. So mark your calendars for this wonderful opportunity for staff to celebrate with their colleagues and for us to congratulate our retirees as well. We also have a celebration in our Read for Refugees program. District 39 was proud to sponsor a student-led initiative called Read for Refugees, which took place district-wide last week. Our students participated in a variety of reading activities at school and outside of school in support of this project. And we set up a fundraising page with the Red Cross. All donations were completely optional and went directly to the Red Cross and their efforts in Ukraine. As a district, we set a goal of raising $5,000 through reading. And I'm very proud to report that through the hard work of our students and the generosity of our parents and community, we have exceeded our goal. As of my last check, we've almost reached $6,000 in donations. And we're really proud, not only of these contributions and the generosity of our community, but really of how excited our students were to be able to contribute in a meaningful way. And their reading, their support for this project, and the leadership they showed at their schools, what is to be commended. We also have some exciting news in terms of our grants that we submitted for solar panels. As some of you may have heard, Central Harper, Mackenzie, Ramona, and W J H S have been awarded a grant from the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation as part of its K through 12 Solar Schools program. This grant supports the installation of one, of a one-kilowatt system. Am I saying that correctly? Yes. Which will include an online dashboard that will show real-time electricity generation. Each system is relatively small and will power the electricity needed for a handful of classrooms. The main purpose of these systems is to help teachers instruct about science, math, technology, and the environment. As the students will see how sunlight is converted into electricity. The panels will be placed in a high-visibility location to inspire our students, our parents, and communities, and the community members to get excited about solar energy. High Crest Middle School is the only school that wasn't awarded a grant this time because they were a previous recipient of this grant and kind of a leader in this regard. Tony helped to lead this initiative. So Tony, I want to turn to you before I open it up for questions and comments. Anything I missed in that?
Not really. We did have teachers and students involved in how they would use the solar panels to connect to curriculum or how to get other kids excited about sustainability or solar energy. So for them to hear that the grant was awarded and to see their faces light up and maybe saw the pictures of balloons nearby. And it was a very exciting moment for kids, teachers, and the district. Yeah, no, we can open it up to questions.
Yeah, no, we can open it up to questions.
It really was. I was able to help celebrate with one of those schools. And my goodness, those students had some pretty incredible ideas, and they still were generating them. Like after they found out that they were awarded, then they were thinking about new ways that they can expand this knowledge and this enthusiasm. So thank you, Tony, for leading that into our students and teachers and principals who helped with that as well. Erin, I think you had a question or comment?
I was just going to say that there's a picture of, it's mostly kids, I think, on the record North Shore right now. Viewing that picture is worth your time because they are so animated. And remember when we had them come, the green team came and did the pledge, and they had their homemade green team shirts? Yeah, those are in the picture. It's worth your time.
Thanks.
Leo Kraus, our Communications Director, was wise to tell the kids to give an action shot of their excitement. So got to give credit where credit is due.
I think Dana Masiakos and Tony might be in that picture as well, if I'm not mistaken. It's a great shot. Thank you, and we're really excited. Lots of good news there. And relates to our sustainability effort, which I know is later on the agenda under some old business for Village Corporation. Tony, did you have something else to share?
I didn't know. I just had a question. So how long does a solar panel last? Is it a program?
No, it's, yeah, so the program, this grant program, we're lucky enough to receive these grants now because in approximately three years, the grant will run out. These are full-size solar panels that have a warranty of 25 years. So it is possible, when you think about some of our kids, that they will come back with their kids, potentially, to still see them on the buildings before they need replacements. So we have the main grant from the organization that Dr. Kremiscoli mentioned. And we also have a supplemental grant through Cook County to pick up any remaining costs, which do include a celebration, include professional development for our teachers, which is free, if not even paid, for them to attend. I mean, it's just a great grant all around. Talk about stories out of Illinois that just need to get out and be celebrated. So it's a great thing that's happening in the state of Illinois. We're a good company with a lot of other schools, but 25 years, yeah.
All right, a couple of other things. As we finished off the week last week, we had some special activities happening within our schools. We had professional development for our fifth or eighth grade staff on April 22nd. So students were out of schools, but staff were, and teachers were in schools, working hard. On Friday, we hosted a Professional Development Day for fifth or eighth grade staff. Our keynote speaker was Sarah Ahmed, a teacher curriculum specialist and the author of Be the Change. Staff spent time engaged in collaborative and reflective discussions in learning about social emotional learning competencies as well. The afternoon included a showing of Race to be Human and guided discussion around all of these topics. It really was a wonderful day of shared learning and discussions. And so we're grateful for that time. It seems like we have some time set aside for professional development, and yet there's never enough. And so this was a really wonderful day of learning.
I promise I'm not trying to filibuster the administrative announcement. When I was preparing for the board meeting over the weekend, and I saw that Sarah Ahmed came, I really geeked out. Like Dr. Gibbs said, that it's been a long four years for her in graduate school. I'm in graduate school, and it's also been four years. I have one left. Because I'm getting certified to teach middle school math, language arts, and social studies. And she co-wrote a book called Upstanders by her and Smokey Daniels. And that was the text a year ago in my social studies methods class. It's the best book I've read in grad school so far. Like, so I'm so grateful that you brought her here to do professional development for our staff.
She was really great, really engaging. So thank you. I know that Katie and Kelly had a hand in coordinating that day. Katie, anything I missed that we'd like to celebrate in that day?
I think you've covered it all. It's really huge for those to tell again. She really wanted the day to be of a common theme and finding Sarah Ahmed. And I think she was a huge get. The staff really enjoyed her. So you're not the only one who was fangirling over our presenter. I think all of us were.
For sure. And just a wonderful presentation. The breakout sessions seemed to be equally engaging. And sometimes you can look around and get a read of the room when a keynote speaker is addressing the group. And everyone was so engaged and really seemed to take several key points away. So it was wonderful. Meanwhile, our elementary schools were hosting conferences, parent-teacher conferences, spring conferences. They hosted on the 21st and the 22nd. And as always, this is a wonderful opportunity for our families and teachers to connect, share stories, and build partnerships. And so, again, we're really thankful. Our teachers put in so much time in preparation for these days. And we're grateful that parents are able to carve out time in their busy schedules to meet with our teachers as well. And again, nurture those partnerships that are so critical to the success of our students. So conferences were offered remotely as well as in-person for those who needed. And it seemed to be a successful model. And we are very much looking forward to the chance to have some open houses this spring as the year progresses. And so our principals and teachers are busy trying to make sure that the logistics for those are such that people can be comfortable visiting the schools and starting to welcome some of our parents back into our schools. And with that, I'd like to update the board and offer the board an opportunity for some discussion around our COVID mitigation review. We have seen an uptick in positive COVID-19 cases reported both last week and the week prior, as evidenced on our COVID metrics page. Today, we saw a significant uptick, especially at WJHS, which led us to again consult with the Cook County Department of Public Health and really carefully review those cases and our mitigation measures. So the board will remember that as we're, maybe I should share my screen here. Let me see if I'm able to do this. So this is our metrics page. We continue to review this. We keep a close eye on this daily. We have a formal meeting each week where we review all of the metrics that are part of our reduced mitigation plan. The board will remember that we established that plan, and it was adopted just about two days before the CDC kind of changed their plans and the way in which they monitor communities for COVID. And so we incorporated their measurements into our model here as well. We still continue to be in the low level for our community. And those who might be interested are able to follow along by clicking on that blue dot there. And this brings us to a page that just kind of describes the way in which community levels are being monitored by the CDC and that the Cook County remains in the low level, the low community level, as they measure. Their measurements, again, just after we approved our reduced mitigation, reduced mitigation plan really shifted the way in which we were measuring and monitoring community risk in the COVID-19 community level. And so those metrics are incorporated here. But within the school, we continue to monitor some of those local metrics as well. So as we are in the low level, the CDC would advise staying up to date with vaccines, getting tested if you have symptoms. And then if we were to move into the medium or high level, they would suggest other mitigation levels. As we look at our COVID reduced mitigation plan, we know that we had an off-ramp. And that was kind of purposeful so that we could really take slow steps toward releasing some of these mitigation measures and monitoring our success with that. We're recognizing that some of what we're seeing in the community is not related to our off-ramp, but certainly impacted, that we have impact and the ability to control what we're doing in the schools. So every week, we review this with intention. Every two weeks, we've set some dates for making adjustments. And at the most recent adjustment point, which was just last Tuesday when we review, Wednesday we communicate, we had the opportunity to make some adjustments. Let me see if I can blow this up a little bit more here. And take that last step off of the off-ramp. But based on the number of cases we were recognizing at that time and some of the metrics that we had identified within our reduced mitigation plan, we decided to pause. So the decision on April 19th was to pause on that last step to maintain those mitigation measures and to do another review on May 3rd. Really glad we did that because we have seen and continue to see some cases within our schools and again, an uptick today, especially at one of our schools. So the other noteworthy decision that was made is to continue free COVID-19 PCR testing. We continue to make S.H.I.E.L.D. available on a weekly basis. We were doing it on Saturday through this past Saturday. And we'll continue with our Tuesday and Thursday testing schedule. Saturdays just proved a little too difficult for our, the staffing from S.H.I.E.L.D. and the lab services were becoming a little less reliable. We also had less participation on Saturdays. And so to try and make sure that we can continue to make testing available on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're moving forward, we won't be doing testing on Saturday as well. We, again, want to make sure that things are predictable for our families and our community. There is a plethora of options for testing out in the community. And the Health Department is now advising and accepting rapid antigen tests or home-based tests. So it can be lab-based or a home-based test. So again, there's quite a bit of access to the, to testing throughout our community. But we know that S.H.I.E.L.D. is a valuable resource for our staff and for our students and families. So we continue to make that available on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Looking back at our metrics page, so we paused on taking that last step. And part of that is because we're starting to see an uptick in the positivity rates throughout our community, throughout our region, and within our schools. Anything that's happening outside of our schools tends to have an influence inside of our schools. And so we're seeing this uptick. Last week, we reported 83 cases as having been on site. Just today, we reported 52. Now, these are, because it's a lagging indicator, it is reported today, those students were last in school on Thursday, some of them on Wednesday, depending on when they were experiencing symptoms and getting tested and then subsequently reporting them to the school. As soon as we received that report, we reported to the Cook County Department of Public Health. And we also really monitor what's happening because we're keeping a close eye, again, on our metrics that are defined within our reduced mitigation plan. These levels were established just prior to the CDC adjusting what they were recommending. But we still find value in tracking and monitoring these. And they give us some guidance as to when and how to adjust. Ultimately, we rely on the Cook County Department of Public Health to make any final or mandatory adjustments. And so we know that when a school or a classroom or a house or a team were to reach the orange, we're really considering what adjustments we could make. And when they reach the red, we're really making those adjustments if we haven't already. And so for today at WJHS, we did make some adjustments, communicated those out to families. We are strongly recommending masking at this point while at school at WJHS, just based on the number of cases and the exposure that has occurred across each of the teams at WJHS. We're also very thankful we can access outdoor lunch. And so we're going to be using that as well throughout this week. Continuing to encourage those who have either been exposed or are experiencing symptoms, even if they're mild, and even if you're vaccinated, you must get tested. And so we're encouraging that to occur as well. So we'll continue to keep a close eye on this. In consultation with the Health Department this afternoon, they said we are doing everything we should be doing and could be doing at this point. They aren't recommending further adjustments. They're really glad that we continue to notify families each and every day of possible exposures that may have occurred. They're glad that we're encouraging testing and requiring it when individuals are symptomatic. And they were appreciative of our encouragement of masking while indoors if families are willing to pursue that. And so some layered mitigations that we're keeping a close eye on. But again, most reassuring was that the Health Department really did affirm that the steps we're taking are the right steps to be taking at this point, and they're not recommending further adjustments. But I do think it was the right decision to pause on that last step when we did. And I'm glad that our metrics led us to make that decision. So that's where we are right now. We'll continue to keep a really close eye on that. And on May 3rd, we'll again evaluate that next step in the off-ramp. If you look at the off-ramp, you'll see that there's a number of layers that could potentially be adjusted in that final off-ramp step. But a lot of those are some of the logistical layers rather than ones that students will feel directly. I think the most important thing is when we're eating lunch, to either be eating outdoors or to be increasing distancing indoors when we're seeing a substantial or noteworthy number of cases. And so in speaking with Kate Dominique today, she has plans to ensure that we're either eating outdoors at WJHS or that there's increased distancing for this week as we kind of navigate this uptick in cases. Happy to answer any questions or the board may wish to just have a dialogue about this topic.
I appreciate the presentation, and I also appreciate our continued commitment to the Health Department. And I always find comfort in following the recommendations on that.
Seems like the community metrics, basically, I think you mentioned it, went up pretty much in lockstep. And we don't really have any contact tracing type of concepts anymore, correct?
Well, we within the school will contact trace at the classroom level. The Health Department has kind of shifted their focus to outbreaks only. And so they really are monitoring for outbreaks. We aren't at this point designated as being in an outbreak, nor is the community. But the Health Department representative, the epidemiologist, was really careful to say somewhat repeatedly that, in fact, they're seeing this across the region. There is an uptick in cases. And so she was not surprised at all that we've seen an uptick as well and said that's really just reflecting what's happening in the community. The good news is severe disease and hospitalization rates are not seeing the same level of increase or uptick at this point. And that's really what the Health Department and the CDC are measuring and monitoring. Yet, we want to be careful and we want to be thoughtful and supportive of one another as we support our health. Then I will move on to a couple of other topics to update the board on. One is our outdoor shade structures. And this topic came up as we were trying to bring students back to school from remote learning and recognizing the need for greater outdoor space. And in so doing, knew that we needed some coverage. And so we had some tents. Tony Demonti was a huge supporter and help in arranging those and working with the village and making sure everything was in place there. And as we continued to find value in these tents, we started to think a little bit creatively about what other ways can we use our outdoor space in more permanent ways. And so we have identified outdoor shade structures. During the pandemic, again, we rented the tents for students and staff. And learning through this experience, we've explored ways to provide permanent solution. We're going to be using our ESER funds to purchase shade structures at Central Harper-Mackenzie, Ramona, and Highcrest. They'll be placed on top of the existing concrete or blacktop. For WJHS, the Wilmot Park District actually has plans to place a pavilion in the community playfields behind the Learning Commons, which we believe our students will be able to access during the day. And our installation of the shade structures through a ton of work from Tony Demonti again and from Cory as well, will occur late summer or early fall. So we're really eager to see this come to fruition. Tony, thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Just for the board's benefit, they're going to be 24 by, 24 feet by 36 foot. So if you look at this room that we're in right now, from the accordion door, accordion door, wall to wall, that's about the size that these will be. So visualize it. And colors were chosen by buildings. So either by vote or school colors, or there was certainly some choice in these buyers.
No, just me, but shade structure is a term that I grew up with. So what, I mean, we have tents?
Yeah.
And I know like in Mediterranean environments, they have the wooden slats. What is a shade structure?
Yeah, so it's, would it be okay, Dr. Kremiscoli, if I share my screen?
Oh, sure.
I think it'll make more sense when you see this. All right, can you see it?
Yeah.
All right, so it's not necessarily waterproof. It's a very dense fabric and to varying degrees, depending on which one was selected. There's a certain UV rating, but it's But it's certainly just for shade. There are large metal poles that construct here and underneath in the frame. And then the fabric is fire-resistant fabric that stays up all year. So this is something that not just our students could benefit from and, and teacher can check out or lunch can be had out there, but also even after hours as there's many times programming out in our fields or park district camps. Or this really just is a win in general to maximize fresh air for our kids.
Having a hard time visualizing?
Yep, yep.
Very commonly seen in California where I worked at one point.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, shade structures are very common outdoor learning spaces and future spaces for.
You're starting to see them at playgrounds a lot now too. You'll see them on top of the play structures.
What's the life expectancy of the?
They come with a ten-year warranty. The poles will last a while. And if you have to replace the fabric, then you can use them. But, but out of the box, so to speak, it's ten-year warranty.
Building at WJHS is a hard surface material that the park district is putting out for multi-use across the field usage.
I love that because it's going to have like the benefit well beyond the building. And I also think, right, we're going to continue just like we have to with air conditioning because the planet's heating up. This will certainly just be another mitigation strategy for, for lighting. It's awesome.
I agree. It feels a bit like a COVID silver lining.
It is.
Like something we discovered that was really beneficial, that brings kids outside for some days.
And we did look at, do we purchase our own tents? Do we purchase new, used, smaller version, continue to rent? This is the most cost-effective way to give us a shaded, permanent area that could be used before school, after school for all intents and purposes. Yeah, silver lining lesson learned from COVID, maximize fresh air.
Great leadership. Thank you.
A less celebratory topic. We've been looking at the central roof because the central of the roof, a, a section of the roof at Central had an issue with a water leak during, leaking down into the offices during some heavy rain. A repair or fix was attempted, but the leak remained. And so I'm going to let Cory explain this a little bit more because he's been working in-depth with the architects and the contractors and the builders and all the people who know a whole lot about roof corrings and what the next steps are for us to consider. Cory?
So, thank you. So as, as Carrie mentioned, that there, there was a leak and what prompted the vendor to take the couple of corrings was the fact that the leak continued. From their perspective, they were recommending that we proceed with replacing that particular section, which is about eleven thousand square feet on the second floor. But before we proceeded down that path, there are obviously a lot of steps to take. One of the first things we did was talk with our construction team, get their perspective. And STR has a group of roofing experts that have come out and done surveys for us in the past. And so the very next day after we found out, they had somebody out inspecting this particular section and taking a look at the surrounding areas in addition to that section. What they recommended, just to gain another level of confidence before we were to take a step forward with this level of expenditure, was to do, is to do a scan of that roof. And section two, section three of the roof is about sixteen thousand square feet. The part that we were looking at doing is only eleven thousand. They're going to scan all sixteen thousand in an additional section next to it that's another couple thousand square feet. But they had a little bit of interest in scanning. Once that's done, the reason they would do that is it would tell us the level of moisture within the roofing system, whether it's there, whether it should be, help us to make our decision and to provide some confirmation. So that could happen as early as tomorrow. Like by the end of the day, it could have results depending upon the weather. Or it could be as late as probably this upcoming weekend. Once we have that, we'll probably move pretty, we'll move quickly. I think one of the considerations, at least on our side, is and we saw this back in the winter when we were going through our bids and some of the contractors have roofing work is getting materials. Right now, we're talking, we're only two months out from the summer. We do have one contractor that has provided a proposal ready. They do have the materials. So that is a consideration. And then given the size of the, the expenditure, normally this is something that would go out to bid, but given the late time and the lead time that you would take to bid, the school code does offer an exception, an emergency exception to the purchasing code. So if we were to go down that path, the process is that our legal counsel would provide a resolution detailing out the situation. And then it would come to the board for a vote and, or it would require seventy-five percent, which is six out of seven, board members to vote yes on said project. We're not quite there yet, but we wanted to make everyone aware in case we got the news either tomorrow or sometime this week that we need to go down this. So really, at this point, we're just really looking for that confirmation or opinion from, from another source other than the company that could potentially be doing the work for us. Be happy to answer any questions. So I, I would say the way the issue, I mean, I mean theoretically, yeah, maybe. The, the concern, part of the concern that we have is not just additional moisture getting in, but the, what the corring showed was the level of moisture within the roofing system already and what that could do over the next, really over this summer leading into, right? So the opportunity is that take care of it this summer, wait a whole nother year, take care of it next summer. So that's really what we're looking for is the level of moisture in there. Particularly of concern to us is knowing, knowing that moisture level, you know, what, what could happen if you get to, you think you're fine now, but then you get to September, October, it's too late. And, and you've got to take care of something. So that's why we're doing the scan. And, and one of the challenges with these flat roofs is just because where the leak, e, e, even in this building, where the leak's coming down isn't necessarily where the leak is on the roof. The leak could be a hundred or two hundred feet away and it could travel through the roofing system. And then finally, you know, find an area that's not waterproof or able to contain it. And then it comes down through the ceiling. So it's not always straightforward.
I wouldn't suggest that we wait.
Right.
Like to the next rain.
No, so the, we, oh yeah, we've had roofers out multiple times since then, continue. And from what I've heard so far, you know, Friday was a lot of rain. And there, I, I haven't heard anything bad from there. There may have been a little bit, but nothing like I was, I, definitely on Friday, as it poured, I was, we were definitely. But, but just because we didn't see anything come through the ceiling doesn't mean it wasn't gathering in the roofing system somewhere. So, which is, which is why we're doing through the, through the scam.
Are you okay waiting until our next meeting? Or do you want us to think about a special meeting potentially between now and then?
I think a special meeting is certainly possible. I mean, the next steps is once we get the results of the scan, things will move very quick with the contract, with potential con, the contractor we have or potentially another contractor or two. And just like how quickly do they need us to say yes? I mean, I think at this point, we're looking at, we're less than, you know, a little under two months from the start of summer. And I think a lot of contractors have probably already eliminated by not having the materials available to them. So from our perspective, anyone who would, could confirm to us that they would have the materials to be able to do it this summer, I think, yeah, having a special meeting could make a lot of sense.
Keep that in our mind that that might be.
I had a question. So how much confidence do you have that it's limited to eleven thousand square feet?
So the, the eleven thousand square feet, that was the area that was identified by the company that was working on repairs and did some corrings. And when they looked at the area of roof, that was probably the minimum area. The architectural firm is going above and beyond that, that eleven thousand square feet. And if anything shows up in that area outside of eleven, I think it's certainly possible that another step is having them scan additional adjacent sections. If you were to look at an aerial shot of the roofing sections, I think at Central, there's fifteen different sections. Some are pretty large, some are small. And so there are definitely, the, the section three is by far the largest section. So there's a lot of them that touch it. So depending on how far the, this has gone or not gone, will definitely play into our next steps.
Two quick ones. Independent of this, when was the timeline when the, that roof was coming?
So, yeah, so this, the majority of the roof at majority of the roof at Central, albeit a couple of sections, were installed in two thousand and one. So we were, we're at twenty-one years. Realistically, looking at our roofing survey before this leak issue happened, we're probably looking at the end of this decade, so pushing thirty years. Probably about when, you know, unless a roof was showing issues beforehand. But we had SDR's roofing department do a roofing survey of all the sections for us last summer. It's kind of like a lead into some of the stuff we did through the winter for our long-term capital planning, but just getting an idea of like what conditions, different sections were. And I think the thing that was most important to me being, being here for a short amount of time was identifying how, are there any sections that were in immediate need that kind of jumped up to the front of the line? I think SDR had said that the previous roofing survey had been done. I think like around twenty fourteen or fifteen, so it was like six or seven years. You know, sometimes a certain section or two will, will jump up. Had other ones that were installed at the same time. So, yeah, I mean, if we replaced it, yeah, we've gotten twenty years, but you know, we would like to get up near that thirty-year mark.
Even if we only had a bid from the one contractor and said the legal implications of that, I mean, our general contractor should have some kind of feel for what's the reasonable price.
Yes, yeah. So the other part of this is I've already shared the, the price with Nicholas. And they felt like it was a good price, but they hadn't seen the actual detailed list of work that they would be performing, so what was included and what wasn't compared to what may be done in a normal roofing project. So that was kind of our next step was should we go forward with this? We would certainly have SDR look at the proposal to make sure that everything that they would want to see in the roof and project process is in there. And, you know, adjust for any modifications or if there's anything beyond there that they felt like we needed to address, either on the roof or adjacent to it on the walls or flashings or anything like that. We would take care of that with this particular company or another company.
Do you have any programming scheduled for Central this summer?
So, so yes, I mean, as you can imagine.
Other schools all have projects going on.
Yes.
rhetorical question.
I mean, so the, there are many layers, there are many layers to this. And Ramona, Mackenzie, and Harper each have larger construction projects. Ramona will see some, some pro, some partnership programming just because it's the windows and it's a little less intensive. But the other two will be closed. So yes, our, our lower grade summer programming, the month of July, will be at Central. I did ask the contractor what kind of, like the time they would take to do this particular section. They said it would be about six or seven working days from start to finish to do this section. Now, a working day is a day without rain or any kind of delay or interruption. So that could, depending upon the weather, that could blend into two or two and a half, three weeks. But I think to your next question, there's a window from the time school ends to when summer programming starts at Central, but it's not, you Twitter. So that's another thing that we're considering as we think about what company may do this.
We will keep the board apprised.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we need to have a special vote, I mean, it's hard enough to lock these people in. We find somebody that's appropriate to do what we need to do.
We'll keep you posted. A list on this evening's agenda is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting calendar. It has been established and reviewed, and so it's recommended later on the agenda for board approval. The committee of the whole calendar, while not requiring official board approval, is also provided for board reference. We did hear from one member that the August fifteenth date may not be ideal for a committee of the whole meeting. August is always a really tough time to hold a meeting because that end of August is like end of summer vacations. And yet for us, without a July meeting, that August committee of the whole meeting is really important. So we may not have all members present, but certainly would need a quorum in order to hold that meeting. So we just kind of wanted to make sure quick that, that August fifteenth date would work for most. Otherwise, we could look at August eighth or a date in between somewhere. Looking for some feedback. And maybe we don't, we, we can always adjust later, but we'll need some feedback if we want to adjust.
So in preparing for this, I already, I had my math middle school content exam scheduled for the fifteenth at eight o'clock. I've already changed that the next day.
Oh, thank you.
I'm free on the fifteenth.
Oh, that's great.
But I could change it again or again.
I think if everybody else can be here, we're good to go. I am going to be here, but we have enough people, that's fine. I think it completely needs to change.
So I'll just remind everyone that the June dates and the August dates are always difficult. They always present some challenges for people because of travel, because of work responsibilities, end of school year responsibilities, starting of school year responsibilities, dropping off college kids, all of those things come into play. So look at those dates in particular. And if, if there are complications with those, let me know as soon as possible. Again, we may not be able to have every board member present, but quorum is required in order for us to meet. And those, because we don't meet in July, those bookends are really important to the work that we need to accomplish to start the year off well. Okay. Very good. And then the final piece from me is Freedom of Information Act requests. We received and processed several. Walter Keats requested documents on district-wide student enrollments and projections for the next five years and the FY twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve Annual Statement of Affairs. Jeffrey Zach requested all email written correspondence between Janice Zach and/or Gina Conti and the Willmet School District Teachers, Administrators, and our staff from February twenty twenty-one to present. Keterzina Lipinski requested all information related to the governing Board of Education blanket surety bond, surety liability, insurance policy, and errors and omissions. And if applicable, following duty of care policy, general obligation bonds, long-term bonds for school board, crime policy, risk management policy, accord numbers one-two-five, one-two-six, one-two-seven, one-two-eight, including the insured amount of the policy, certificate of liability, faithful performance bond, fidelity bond, public employee dishonesty policy, public employee blanket bond, statutory bond, official bond, power of attorney for surety bond, company blanket bond, power of attorney for the surety bond company oath of office. And this was a similar FOIA request to another. So this one was responded to in a similar fashion as the prior. The previous one was responded as well. I believe that one was responded to in February, if I'm not mistaken. Cory, I think that was the date if you were interested. Brandon Lesko requested a list of employees' last names, school names, and total sick days accrued as of April first, twenty twenty-two. And John Klinger, Klingner requested curriculum materials created by organizations, advocates for youth, and/or amaze. Anything I missed? Okay, we'll move on to annual business. We have two topics and Cory Bolzmeier is going to address both the Highcrest Middle School flooring bid and the student transportation fees.
Okay, so the Highcrest Middle School flooring bid, we held the bid opening on Thursday, April fourteenth. Uh, we were, we had received two sealed bids. Um, Central Rug and Carpet was the, the lowest responsible bidder at a hundred seventy-seven thousand, three ninety-five. Just for reference, we had sent out a dozen, uh, bid packages and had, had reached out to several companies as well, um, afterwards to try and do encourage them to, uh, come. But we ended up with, uh, two participating with the mandatory walk-throughs, submitting bids, both were, both were good companies. Um, Central Rug and Carpet had, has done work for the district before and has done good work. We feel really good about, um, the bid and the pricing. Um, we had kind of looked at the square footage that we were doing across classrooms, hallways, and cafeteria area. We were thinking that the price would probably be something like a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty-five thousand. So both bids were right in that realm, came in a couple thousand less than what I was expecting, which was nice. Um, so we're recommending that the, uh, board approve this, uh, and we can get to work. Yapi, answer any questions?
Like you have a great student transportation fees where you spoke about this and John did a nice summary during, um, of our committee of the whole discussion. And so Corey, do you want to update the board?
I think the only thing that I have to add to that or what John had talked about earlier is just that, um, you know, the, the market factors affecting transportation services, um, from a lot of different angles are rising rapidly and, uh, we saw a larger-than-normal renewal. And where we kind of, where we landed to, to increase the fees to the riders too was to offset the, the increase in cost that we're expecting for the next year and then, um, receiving that direction to kind of work on a longer-term plan to, uh, try and get up to seventy-five percent of the cost covered by riders. So, um, yeah, once again, just asking for, for board approval, uh, later this evening.
So that will be later on this evening's agenda. We also have board policy review. This is the second and final reading of several board policies. Um, any changes made from first reading to second reading have been highlighted in yellow. Uh, we had some in-depth discussion regarding five colon ninety, um, and the section that is struck regarding board member responsibilities and reporting child abuse. It is struck in policy five colon ninety because it is now incorporated into policy two colon twenty, number three, and number eighteen. So just want to make a special note of that, that it is already incorporated into a different policy. Um, we had a lot of discussion regarding a couple of these policies, and so we're pleased to recommend these for, uh, second reading, second and final reading this evening. Conversation board members? Yes?
Yeah, I, I, um, I know, I think we talked about this a bit and given it some thought. Um, I really like the idea of getting closer to, uh, while, so I like the, this, uh, press initiative that we're going through. And I think that it, it bears further, you know, discussion and consideration if we should maybe accelerate that. But not right now, but, but I, I do like it. And I think it, you know, having read the school code more lately, um, you know, and reflected on our own policies, okay, it's success.
If I remember correctly, I think we talked about putting it on an acutely of the whole agenda to talk about what that would look like.
Yeah.
Um, to align with press.
Yeah.
Hear from, right.
Yeah.
Hear what it's like for other schools that have done that. I agree with you. Great. Okay. Well, then I think this brings us to another opportunity for the public to address the board. Thank you, Katie. I don't see anybody back there. Um, uh, so we will continue with our agenda, uh, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Miss Stone, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. I move to approve the student transportation fees for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as contained in exhibit A of the report. I move to approve the administrators' twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three contractual salary increase indexed to Consumer Price Index, CPI, with an aggregate merit raise of two point five percent and benefits as detailed in the compensation and benefits plan for administrators. I move to approve the calendar of dates for regular meetings of the Board of Education and to set the location of the regular meetings as the McHaleian Education Center, six fifteen Locust Road, Willmet, Illinois, six zero zero nine one. I move to approve as second and final reading of Board of Education policies, two colon two-three-zero, public participation at Board of Education meetings and petitions to the board, four colon fifteen, budget planning, four colon one-one-zero, transportation, five colon three-zero, hiring process and criteria, five colon nine-zero, abused and neglected child reporting, five colon one-zero-zero, staff development program and professional opportunities, five colon one-nine-zero, teacher duties and qualifications, five colon two-zero-zero, terms and conditions of employment and dismissal, teachers, five colon two-eight-zero, non-certified duties and qualifications, six colon one-five, school accountability, six colon two-zero, school year, school year calendar and day, six colon three-zero, organization of instruction, six colon five-zero, school wellness, six colon six-zero, curriculum content, six colon one-one-zero, programs for students at risk of academic failure and/or dropping out of school, six colon one-two-zero, education of children with disabilities, six colon one-three-five, accelerated placement, six colon one-five-zero, home and hospital instruction, six colon one-six-zero, English learners, six colon one-nine-zero, extracurricular and co-curricular activities, six colon two-three-five, access to electronic networks, six colon two-eight-zero, grading and promotion, seven colon one-zero, equal educational opportunities, seven colon two-zero, harassment of students prohibited, seven colon four-zero, non-public school students, including parochial and homeschooled students, seven colon five-zero, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools, seven colon six-zero, residents, seven colon seven-zero, attendance and truancy, seven colon one-zero-zero, health eye and dental examinations, immunizations and exclusion of students, seven colon one-four-zero, search and seizure, seven colon one-eight-zero, prevention, prevention of in response to bullying, intimidation, and harassment, seven colon one-nine-zero, student behavior, seven colon two-zero-zero, suspension procedures, seven colon two-one-zero, expulsion procedures, seven colon two-two-zero, bus conduct, seven colon two-four-zero, code of conduct for participants in extracurricular activities, seven colon two-five-zero, student support services, seven colon two-six-zero, exemption from physical education, seven colon two-zero, sorry, seven colon two-nine-zero, suicide and depression awareness and prevention, seven colon three-zero-five, student athlete concussions and head injuries, seven colon three-four-zero, student records, and seven colon three-four-five, use of educational technologies, student data, privacy, and security. I move to approve to release to the public the executive session minutes for December sixth, twenty twenty-one. I move to approve to maintain as confidential the executive session minutes for the following dates, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. I move to approve to dispose of executive session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for the following dates, October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, January thirteenth, twenty twenty, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, February tenth, twenty twenty, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, March sixteenth, twenty twenty, April twentieth, twenty twenty, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two through March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two in the following amounts. Educational fund, five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. O and M fund, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Transportation, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Capital projects, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, sorry, two hundred and seventy-three hundred and one, two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and one dollars and thirty-nine cents for a total of all funds of one million, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents. I move to approve the man, this is the last, this is the last one, right?
Dates? What, say, I apologize. I think that the dates for this, it was March twenty-second, just to clarify, uh, two thousand twenty-two to April twenty-fifth, two thousand.
Okay, should I say that one again?
No, you don't have to leave them again.
Okay. But should I say that part again? Okay. I move to approve the manual checks issued between March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two and April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two in the following amounts. Educational fund, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, sorry, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and one cent. O and M fund, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Transportation, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents toward ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars for a total of all funds of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Ian Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zieke?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Papes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Karen?
Yes. Motion carried. Two other motions, I believe, on the agenda. Yes, I need a motion to approve the HMS flooring project.
I move to award the base bid in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars per bid specifications for the flooring project at Highcrest Middle School. Central rug and carpet for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars for a total Highcrest Middle School project cost of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Ian Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zieke?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Papes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Karen?
Yes.
The motion has been moved and, nope, nope, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the D thirty-nine fiscal year twenty-two amended budget.
I move to adopt the amended budget for Willmet Public Schools, Cook County District Thirty-Nine, as presented in the report reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Ian Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zieke?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Papes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Karen?
Yes. Motion carried. Uh, we'll move to conference items, old business. I know, uh, for one, we have the Village Sustainability Coordinator. Carrie, did you want to give an update on that?
I can. Um, I don't have much to share. I know that the job description is being worked on by the Village and that may help the board to better understand this position and any possible connections our district may have with this position. Um, at this point, I know the board spoke recently about, um, whether or not this seems like a position we would have a direct, um, need for. We certainly have some positions already allocated within our district and it seems, sounded like the board was, um, advocating a liaison role with this, uh, coordinator position. If in fact the Village, the Park District, um, and other governmental agencies, entities felt like this was of value to their organization, we would want to, um, support that effort, but probably more through a liaisonship rather than a shared position is, was the takeaway, um, that, that I had from the board's last discussion about this. Did share this with, um, the Village Administrators when we last met. Um, our other school district here in Willmet, the Avoca School District concurred they are kind of in a similar position, but very much would want to liaise with, um, this position. And so, um, we seem to be in similar positions, um, however, want to see what the job description looks like and, and maybe that will generate some more, um, insights for members of the board who are serving on the intergovernmental partnership cooperative group.
Sounds good.
Great.
Or there are there any, is there any other old business? New business?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have an update on Science Olympiad. I mean, uh, eight years ago, the, um, District Thirty-Nine Educational Foundation put a big effort, they had multiple people, I was actually involved for a while on that, um, to get it started up. There is partnership with the school. There is a plan to transition it to the school. Lots of things changed over that time period, but it seemed like there was twenty-five, thirty kids minimum that were active participants and multiple others that went to a class or two. So there's quite a lot of, of involvement. So I'd like a update of like where it's been, like this year, I think there's hard time getting a, a staff person to support it. What are the options to maintain this? And it is something that at the high school level is, is, um, supported and, and kids are involved with, and it's a way of getting, um, science education, um, especially to, uh, various communities. So, um, I'd like a, you know, an update, you know, where it's been, how could it be done? You know, given that, that support's changed and maybe we have some internal things that might have to change if we were to support it. So, just an overall update and maybe some recommendations to continue the program.
Certainly can look at that. And I know that John was just speaking of that and, and talking about the Lab Thirty-Nines.
That's why.
There's Science Olympiad, which was the competitive arm of it, which the district absorbed and, and took into its realm. And then there were the non-competitive teams that were through Lab Thirty-Nine. That is the part that really doesn't see the participation rates, um, significant enough. And I think there's some, um, influence that each has had on each other. Um, I know Katie has looked into this just a little bit. I suspect you're probably not prepared to talk to this today, um, but we will certainly bring that back for consideration to the board.
Good and well here. Yay.
Don't, you know, don't get too excited.
Everyone's excited.
Um, all right. So three things happened last Thursday. Remember how gorgeous last Thursday was? As I was traveling to and from an appointment at the New Truene Eka Campus when I decided to follow my grandfather's example and take the scenic route. And these things all wove together in my mind, and hopefully they're going to be coherent to everybody listening. The first was that I drove by McKenzie and saw, again, on the west fence, as it's been there for a long time now, Together We Can Do Anything, which I'm so glad that that's there and it's, I'm, I'm inspired every single time. The second was as I was driving past Central. Um, I saw a class coming out single file in front of the school. It was a nice day out. I thought maybe they're going for a walk. And then I saw other classes coming out on the east side of the school, similarly in a single file line, and I thought, maybe they're going for a walk or maybe it's a fire drill. Honestly, I'm not sure. But, um, it, it doesn't really matter, but what I saw was calm and organized and frankly beautiful. Kids were getting what they needed, whether that was noise-canceling headphones or a gentle prompt to keep walking and keep going. And then on my way back from this appointment, I stopped in McKenzie, maybe this was later in the day, I don't remember, it doesn't matter, and got out and walked and took the little historical tour that, um, we've had in front of our buildings, um, and then, um, in honor of the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the founding of the Village. And that's when I learned that McKenzie, which I knew was formerly Logan School, um, had completely burned down to the ground twice before the current building was erected. So all of this got me thinking about the last few years and resilience and fortitude and strength in the face of hardships and kids getting what they need and people doing their level best to make sure that that happens, going back to the drawing board, coming together in a barn-raising quality when we need to in order to keep walking and keep going. I don't think I'm overstating it to call the efforts of our staff heroic and Herculean. I don't think I'm overstating it to call the efforts of our staff heroic and Herculean. And I also am very thankful for community members who've stepped up to be self. And I'm very grateful for all of the work that everybody does on behalf of kids every single day. That's what I got.
That was beautiful. It was beautiful between the beginning of our meeting and the ending of our meetings. Very moving.
Well done.
So true. Thank you.
I was glad I had that day off and was able to experience that.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, specific personnel, and collective negotiations?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss special education, specific personnel, and collective negotiations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll? John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Ian Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zieke?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Papes? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Peen?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 8:31.